Thirty.
Perfect.
I will now call this meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on November 8, 2022. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Huhn?
President.
Jones?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Huhn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Onto item number four, community comments. This is the time for members of the public to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. And we have someone ready to speak to us this evening. We have Josh Shamburger from Think Iowa City, I think here to give us an update about the volleyball tournament.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I am Josh Shamburger, president of the Convention and Visitors Bureau here for Iowa City Corleville and North Liberty. So I just, we didn't get it in time to get on your agenda, but I wanted to come during public comment and just really publicly thank the city of Corleville, and in particular a few people, Alex Blue Meyer with Sheri's staff, and Vicki Robrick, certainly Kelly and his entire team for all the support that's taken place really over the last year to put together the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Girl State Volleyball Tournament, which we held for the very first time in our 10-year agreement this past week. And it was an experience, to say the least. It was a lot of fun, a lot of planning. We had just short of 31,000 people that entered the Iowa River Landing and at the competition over the four days. By all accounts, all media reports, all spectator reports, athletes, coaches, athletic directors, principals, everything went off just about as perfectly as it could. So I was just telling somebody yesterday that we've been doing these things for over 20 years now, and this is probably the very first event that there wasn't a single fire we had to put out from beginning to end. And that's really, really hard to do. So we did our best. I want to give all the credit. I certainly have received more than my fair share of credit for making this possible. But we have our own Iowa girl on our staff. She's a 2014 state champ from Johnston, Iowa, Kylie Walker, who many of you already know. Kylie really led us in this entire effort. She's one of the leaders for our Iowa City Area Sports Commission, which our organization oversees. And Kylie, as I mentioned, led the entire process and deserves certainly the lion's share of credit for the successes we had. So on behalf of the Girls High School Athletic Union, which were in town today, which is why we have our pink shoes back on, we had a closeout luncheon and went through all the numbers and storage things that need to stick around here for Girl State Wrestling in February. But on behalf of them, and on behalf of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we want to present you with an official 2022 inaugural game ball that you can display here somewhere at the city from this past year's tournament.
Thank you very much.
Kylie, I don't know if you want to add anything, but this is really your success. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to us Iowa girls. And I think there'll be many more state tournaments to come and a lot more of game balls, singlets, and things in the future for us to honor you guys with. So we just really appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, you know, bravo to you and your staff. I've, you know, the glowing reviews are rolling in, heard all kinds of fantastic feedback about the job that you did. And you really, you really make, made it a very special experience. And it wasn't just, it was special for the girls and their families, but for everybody that visited the Iowa River Landing and saw those pink banners and were able to enjoy that, that spirit of festivities in the air, you know? Even if you didn't attend the tournament, it was just a testament to, you know, the way that you, you make people feel special when they come here. And you're a big part of making this a fantastic place to visit. And so thank you. It was, it was awesome. It was so much fun, and we really appreciate you. Would you like a photo? Yeah.
Go up there.
I would agree with everything that Megan said, but the other thing I would say is the Extreme Arena is an absolutely perfect venue for the state volleyball. I mean, it couldn't be any better. It's just, it's, it's intimate, close to the court, it's just a perfect venue.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening? Okay, we will move on to item number five, Hyatt Regency Corleville Fitness Center and Office Alterations. This item is for renovating the fitness center and office space at the Hyatt Regency Corleville Hotel and Conference Center. And we will start this agenda item with a bid report.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Marcus Hotels, who is running this project for the, for the city, solicited bids for this portion of the project because this, this required to be bid out. And they received one bid from M.A. Mortenson Company in the amount of $344,215, and do recommend that we award the contract to M.A. Mortenson Company in the amount of $344,215. As you recall, they are the contractor who is doing the other work that is in the hotel already, so they're on site, ready to go.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting bids and approving the contract for the Hyatt Regency Corleville Fitness Center and Office Space Alterations Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Did we have an estimate, engineer's estimate, or?
Yes, it is about $60,000 over that estimate that was.
It's not like it was $100,000, right?
No, it was several months ago that that original budget was put together, so.
Okay.
And this will be the first work in this phase that'll be done, and that'll start in December. And so, and it does move the fitness center to where the sales office is currently, and so it will almost double the amount of space that is available for fitness center. And that's really the only negative comment that we've received in customer surveys from the very beginning of, when it was a Marriott, was the size of the fitness center, and this will rectify that.
All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number six, Clear Creek Amana New Elementary School for 2024. This is the second reading of an ordinance that would rezone the area to a commercial planned unit development two district. And this will allow Clear Creek Amana School District to build a new elementary school in the west land use area. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2022-1013, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, is previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as parcel number 0626401003, from R1 Single Family Residential District to CPUD2 Commercial Planned Unit Development Two District. This ordinance introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Huhn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item number seven, 10th Avenue Urban Renewal Plan. This is for the abatement portion of the development agreement for the 413 10th Avenue Project. And the public hearing on this item will be on December 13, 2022. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the 10th Avenue Urban Revitalization Plan. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments on this item?
Just so you remember, the development agreement was passed a year or two ago. First 10 years will be 75-25 abatement, which means we'd get, the property will be assessed at 25% of its value. During the second 10 years of the agreement, there will be a rebate of 75% to the developer. As you remember, this is a mixed-use project with residential, and there'll be commercial space on the bottom of this project.
Thank you for that overview. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'm curious why we set it up that way. Basically, they're paying the same amount for those 20 years.
So when we do rebates, we do it subject to annual appropriation, which means any year the council doesn't approve the appropriation, that, that they have no recourse against the city. So when the financing for this project, you, you, the way the projects financed, they don't give us, the way the abatement being for the first 10 years helped get the financing approved for this project, they, they were a little bit leery of the 20 years for the rebates and the annual appropriation language. So the first 10 years, the, the lower taxes are guaranteed no matter what.
And this is the same for pretty much all those buildings?
No, most of them, we've done TIP rebate.
Depends on?
It was this.
Same percentage, or?
No, most of them have been less. This one, there was some significant differences in cost and infrastructure that had to be put in for that particular project. And it also went further, and this, he also paid the city back originally for our land cost as well, which we hadn't invested in that property. So we did get market value for that property.
Great.
Thank you. Could I have the roll call, please?
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight, urban renewal areas. Now, we have two parts to this agenda item. The first is an ordinance that would set the base value of three properties in the Corleville Urban Renewal Area, and this would be in the Oakdale area, on Cross Park Road. This would be for the car wash, the auto parts store, and the multi-tenant building. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number 2022-1014, an ordinance amending ordinances number 608-707, 2001-942, 2006-1052, 2013-1009, 2014-1007, 2017-1017, and 2020-1014, providing that general taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Corleville Urban Renewal Area in the city of Corleville, county of Johnson, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Corleville, county of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies, advance due, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued and incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment project. This, this ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So when will this impact the budget for that tip?
So this sets the, this sets the value for, the base value for these properties that January 1st of 2021, so it wouldn't be till the next budget year that we get the first, first tax, so the first tax payment wouldn't be till '23 and '24.
Yeah, it's 18 months behind, basically.
Yeah, I knew there was a big lag.
Yeah. So these, so what we do, we do this every year, so the values on these properties were about $4,000 for lots before anything was built on them, so we capture all the incremental value from there.
So we'll have a full review for you in January as part of the budget process, and we'll be looking at that total tip. These dollars would be included in that amount of money, and then we'll give you a full report on where we're at. Status-wise, we've got two projects that will go against that, but we will have significant funds that you can decide whether you want to do additional projects or collapse the TIP at some point in time.
Right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Could I get the roll call, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item B, this is the second ordinance for this agenda item. This would set the base value of the 413 10th Avenue Project in the 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Area. Could I have this ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number 2012-1015, an ordinance amending ordinances number 651-706, 96-749, 96-777, 2003-969, 2013-1008, 2014-1011, 2015-1017, 2016-1019, and 2017-1015, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Project area in the city of Corleville, county of Johnson, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Corleville, county of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment project. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huhn. Questions or discussion on this item?
So even though we're doing a, a abatement first, we need to set the base, the base value on this will be zero, because the city owned it before he did, so the, the base value on the lot is going to be zero, so the whole increment will be subject to the TIP. But even though we're not collecting, doing a rebate until year 11, we got to set the base value at the zero, because we can't do it later, otherwise you wouldn't get any increment out of it.
Do we have any idea what this property will be valued at?
I would guess, I think they're, the other buildings have been $10 to $12 million, so they're large, large projects, they'll be, they'll be residential condos, and then it'll be a commercial space on the bottom, they'll all be taxed separately.
So round, if it's $10 million, basically they're paying taxes for 10 years on a 2.5 million property.
Yeah, yep.
That's how that would work.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item number nine, amendment number two to a purchase agreement. This amendment is for the last seven and a half acre parcel to be purchased by the city using a REAP grant or resource enhancement and protection funds. This last REAP grant award was not known at the time of the original purchase agreement, so that is why we are amending it. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving and ratifying amendment number two to that certain purchase agreement with Colony Inc. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments?
This is our last parcel in this whole agreement with the Colony family to purchase. In our discussions with the Colony family, as they put development agreements, or put development, developments together, it's anticipated that there'll be some additional ground that could be dedicated as part of those developments that are adjacent to the park and that may not fit exactly in, in good lot. So I think that there's a good opportunity that we'll be getting additional lands for this area, but these would be the last purchase that we would make.
Does the grant pay for the entire property, or does the city have to pay a portion?
This was, Sheri?
The total, first seven acres was $236,000, and the grant was $325,000.
We had some SRF money left over also, so that'll pay most of the rest of it.
What money is that?
SRF, Estate Revolving Fund monies. That was the monies that got rebated to us for these type of projects from our wastewater treatment plant project.
So really very little general fund money.
Right.
Yep.
All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 10, Fifth Street Project, 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. This agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation is for $1,650,000 in federal surface transportation block grant funds for construction of the Fifth Street improvements between 12th Avenue and 20th Avenue. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a federal aid agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Fifth Street Project, 12th to 20th Avenue. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huhn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, could I have the roll call?
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 11, Food and Beverage Operations Agreement for Brown Deer Golf Club. This is for the renewal of the Food and Beverage Operations Agreement at Brown Deer with Beer Makers, Inc., through, from 2023 through 2024. And we have our Parks and Rec Director Sheri Proud here. Are you here to give us some information on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff have been working with Beer Makers on a renewal agreement. They have been our provider since August, middle of August in 2021, taking over for, when, when the contract transitioned from Marriott to Hyatt. We elected to go with a small business, local business to manage our food and beverage. We, we feel that we'd like to keep that local, small business involved. We feel that we, they're just, we're just getting started with them. We were with Marriott for 14 years, and of course, there's always room for improvement, but they're very, they're very good to work with and listen to what we have to say. We work really in partnership with our staff there at the, at the golf course, and we have these mechanisms in place with this contract that allows for greater oversight here locally and the ability to make changes on the move as we need to versus past contract. And this contract structure ended the FY '22 season in the positive for our budget, which is the first time the Food and Beverage Operations have been in the positive since fiscal year '15. So we'd like to continue to work with them, and we have, you know, we have lots of clauses and things that they have to, to provide for us and, and can get numbers then to people who are interested.
Fabulous. Thank you for that overview. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a Food and Beverage Operations Agreement with Beer Makers for Brown Deer Golf Club. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item?
Well, I might be the biggest golfer in the group. Maybe not, the only golfer. So I solicited some feedback, because there were, I think, some concerns about how it operated the first year. I've shared those with Sheri and Sean, and appreciate their responses to, to those concerns and, and certainly appreciate the positive financial impact this has had on the golf course since that change has been made, so certainly support the project and appreciate the information I obtained mostly earlier today.
Great.
I'm just curious, sure, have we had other interest in leasing that space or providing that service?
We had to reach out to find someone in '21 and had a few people interested. At that time, we selected Beer Makers, and we haven't had anybody express an interest since.
Thanks. And the couple that, others that we had discussions with had significantly less percentage that they wanted to give back to the city. So this was by far the best financial agreement that we could reach.
Could I have the roll call, please?
Huhn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mayor, I would ask council to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to N.
Moved by Huhn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Could I have the roll call, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Huhn?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number 13, city administrators' reports.
Yeah, first item I have, I'd just like to make sure everybody knew that Gwen Shi Lee, our longtime park and recreation employee for over 30 years, passed away on Saturday. It was, sorry to hear her go. She was a great Corleville advocate. She lived right behind Kirkwood Elementary School for many, many years, and she did a lot of things, created new festivals and events for the community, not only in park and recreation, but in other areas. She really took Corleville pride to heart when she was putting together these events. And so just want to think about Gwen and her family with her loss. Where was she living, Kelly? She had, went to the Bird House at the, and she had moved to Melrose Meadows there for a little while, but then she was at the Bird House, so. The 1st Avenue I-80 Project has started again and will be under construction for about two weeks, and then they'll stop for the winter time. So just remind folks to watch for some of the construction activities that are going on there. Appreciate both the Iowa Department of Transportation and the contractor for working with us in regards to not having construction last week and not disrupting that traffic. So that was a really important aspect for that. The contractor's doing an excellent job in getting ahead of things, and so this will be the end of it, and at the end of, what, a week from Friday, Scott, the 18th, about that. And then they will not do any additional work until March of next year. Obviously, there'll be a lot of disruptions starting in March, and we'll talk about that more and remind the public as we move forward. But we have a little reprieve this winter, and that's all I have this time. Well, I just also like to comment on the volleyball tournament last, we had lots and lots of volunteers doing different things, which was excellent. Everything from shuttles from the mall to the, to the arena, to people welcoming visitors there at the front door and answering questions, to our own city staff. And I'd just like to once again thank Vicki and Eric and Scott and a couple others that spent a lot of time analyzing the traffic and making sure that it was flowing smoothly during those times. And we learned a lot. We kept a lot of data so that we can really look at that for future events, not only this event, but others as well, and we're continuing to learn. And, and Scott and I had a discussion about how we need to go back to the Iowa Department of Transportation and talk about signage at this 1st Avenue I-80 interchange. With the traffic and the things that we're learning, we need to be a little flexible and making sure that we do those things in the right way. So we're learning all of the time and getting better, and just appreciate everybody's help with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mayor's report, I have a few things. First, wanted to remind folks that there is still time to apply for a spot on one of our boards or. our boards or commissions. We have several openings. Those applications can be found on the city's website. If you go to the homepage, it's in that news and information section, you can find that there. You click on that, and you, that'll give you information on all of the spots that are open, and you can find the application there as well. Those are due into City Hall at five o'clock PM on November twenty-third, so you still have some time to get those applications in. I also wanted to say welcome to Kiana Pope. Kiana is the new mental health liaison that will be the shared position between the Corleville Police Department, the North Liberty Police Department, and Johnson County Sheriff's Department. I had the opportunity to meet her yesterday, and she is ready to go, very enthusiastic, and is already, you know, really throwing herself into this, into the work. It's, it's very exciting development, and we're, we're so fortunate to, to have her with us. I will not be at the next meeting, so the mayor pro tem will be running the meeting. I do just want to say preemptively, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And then finally, you got an hour to vote. Polls close at eight, go vote, go save democracy, everyone. Thank you to all of the staff at the Johnson County Auditor's Office, Travis, and everyone who has been working so hard the last several weeks, you know, making sure that it's, voting is easy, it's accessible, and convenient in, in our community. So we're just grateful for them, all of their hard work, and for all of the volunteers that are, are staffing the polls today as well. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report?
Just, just wanted, I talked to Don before the meeting. He unfortunately had COVID and was hospitalized last week, so he has feeling, hopefully, he's at home now recovering, so hopefully, we'll see him again next, next, next meeting, but he just wanted to send his, send his regrets for not making the meeting.
Well, sending him lots of healing and, and well wishes.
And one other thing, I was, I did go to the Breeders' Cup in Lexington, Kentucky over the weekend, and a congratulations to Tom Lepick, who owns the horse, who got to run in the world championships at, on Friday. Unfortunately, it's a very good story. If you look up the name Tyler's Tribe, you'll understand where the name of the horse came from, so unfortunately, the horse did not win, but it's pretty good, pretty good to have an Iowa-bred horse who usually runs at Prairie Meadows, run with the big, big horses from all over the world.
That is impressive. That's very cool. All right, thank you. Committee and council members' report, let's start with council member Knutson.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, council member Gross.
Just, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say, as the, I think Iowa city rep, just wanted to say thank you to Josh and the staff, and I wanted to dovetail what he said. This was, you know, probably an event that I think a lot of us had anticipation about, that what could go wrong, because so many things had, you know, it was, it was a hard project to put together, but I heard nothing but great things, and in my role being a coach and a educator, the state tournament, it's the pinnacle of any, you know, coach, and then everybody, I mean, literally, everybody I spoke with was just thrilled. And I think when we're on this side of the, of that, it's nice to hear some positives once in a while, so just wanted to say thank you and to all the city staff that put that on as well. Thank you, I think it's a real, real bright spot for our city. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council member Wynn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things to share tonight. First off is the mobile clinic that will take place at the Corleville Public Library this Saturday from eleven-thirty to two-thirty, and there will be a dental, there will be dental service, a chance to visit with a doctor, and if your kid needs school and sport physical, it's also available there. They have a lot of free eyeglasses for reading, so if you need a pair of reading glasses, do come. They, however, they cannot provide eye exam. They do have a machine that called the refractor machine that will be able to detect whether you, you know, you have far or near sighted, and they can also write prescription for, for your drugs, well, pills, medicine, there you go. And then we have Toy for Todd, actually, this Friday, a celebration of Corleville, so the children museum in, in Corleville here is partnering with the Corleville Food Pantry to have a event called Celebration of Corleville, and it will take place this Friday, November eleventh, from six to eight. Admission to the, the library is a dollar, and the proceeds will go to the Food Pantry to help, you know, with our community member. And I encourage anyone who hasn't checked out the children museum, do take your family there, it's a fun place to, to explore, even for adults. And last but not least is we have Toy for Todd coming up. This year, it's, there is several places that you can register your children to get some toy. However, in Corleville, there will be two days that you can come to the Food Pantry to register for a toy for your children. It's going to be Tuesday, November fifteenth, from two to six PM, Saturday, November nineteenth, from ten-thirty to one PM, and you do need to bring a photo ID and birth certificate approved of day of birth of all of your children who you want to sign up to receive a toy. I know that that's, is a lot of barrier for a lot of folks, and if those things cause hardship for you, and you know that, you know, a, a toy would bring joy to your children, come by the Food Pantry, and we'll, we'll find a way to assist you with that. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Council member Jones.
Couple things, Madam Mayor. First of all, I had the opportunity, as did others here, to participate in the cemetery walk on October thirtieth, which was the first official event, if you will, of Corleville's one-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration, and it was, it was a great event. We had, I don't know, over a hundred people attend, and it just was a lot of fun to be involved in, was, worked out really well, and the community should look for things coming up, because the plan is to have some special event every month as we move toward October third of two thousand twenty-three. I wanted to just add, I mentioned the Community Night, that is a partnership between the Children's Museum and the Food Pantry. The funding for that, or a portion of the funding for that, came from the Corleville Community Fund. We issued a grant to them this summer, and so that helps to pay for, for the lower admission cost. I had the opportunity last week to, for the first time, I hate to admit it, to attend or to visit the Johnson County Historical Society's new location in the, in the lower level of Extreme Arena, and it's really wonderful space. They're still in the process of developing some of their exhibits, but I would just encourage anybody that hasn't been there to, to stop down, it, it's really a, a nice, a nice location, a nice space for them. And finally, with Veterans Day coming up on Friday, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our veterans and active service members for their service to our country. That's it.
Thank you. And last but not least, council member Goodrich.
Yes, everyone did a wonderful job, thank you.
All right.
Nothing to add.
Okay. Good deal. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.